All right, it's time tomorrow morning. Fifteen to twenty pound sales in.
You going tonight?
Tomorrow morning.
Four is that dry, six?
Four.
Okay, it's seven oh one. Um, we're reconvening for the election session. Finally got this right. And um, we have a lot on the agenda at this last meeting of this school year. So um, I think we're gonna move right into the me- of this meeting, although I do wanna just call attention to the fact that it's um, a last Bronxville School District Board meeting for Dr. Mara Ketke. And um, to just express how grateful we are for her ten years of service to the district and her um, her instrumental role in creating the Bronxville Promise for our district. Her um, we are, we will be celebrating her much um, before the end of the year. But um, uh, we will start by expressing gratitude tonight, so thank you, thank you. Uh, we have official election results from last month to accept. Are we accepting them, Karen? Yeah, um, and do I need to read them, or shall I just call attention to the-
They're red with green and they're on the-
The numbers on the screen. Um, we're very grateful that the budget passed, as well as the um, proposition uh, to make use of our capital reserves. So we're very grateful to the voters for, for that support. So could, we have a motion to accept those results?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We also have minutes to accept. Were there any um, corrections or changes to the minutes? There being none, could we have a motion to approve these, the minutes of May ninth, the May twenty first, um, special meeting for the election and the June fifth special meeting?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And with that, Dr. Kelly?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I wanted to start off by um, continuing um, how grateful we are um, about uh, Dr. Ketke's ten years here and how fortunate Irvington um, is for uh, having you as their new superintendent. And with that, uh, we are also so pleased that later on in tonight's agenda, we will um, I will be asking the board to consider Ms. Ann Meyer as our new Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. So when you know you have the talent from within, um, it just makes perfect sense to take advantage of that. And as a result, I'll be in touch with the community in the next couple of weeks as it relates to how we're filling those vacancies um, in the high school. Um, and now I just wanna spend some time, um, as I had committed to um, a couple of months ago. I uh, have spent time speaking with multiple constituencies as it relates to our cellphone usage within the school. Um, and I have spoken to students and teachers, parents, the Board of Education, as well as our leadership team. And I've reflected upon our current practices as it relates to cellphone usage during the school day. So I'd like to take a few minutes and share with the school community some changes for the fall, based on this feedback. And as educators, what we believe is best for our students moving forward. Uh, while we are discussing cellphone usage, we simultaneously discussed how we can increase our students' time outdoors, K through eight, um, as well as continue our education of both our students and our parents in the area of digital citizenship and the use of social media. So allow me to begin with the high school. We believe that it is de- developmentally appropriate for students to have cellphones with them in school. The rule will be made clear the very beginning of the school year, um, in our grade level assemblies, that cellphones are not allowed out during class. Any cellphone found during class will be confiscated and the student will serve detention. And if it becomes a pattern, the parents will be invited in to retrieve the cellphones. And the teachers also will make this clear in the beginning of the year in each of their classes. There may be times that they uh, the teachers will ask the students, which happens now, to take their phones out because it's relevant to whatever they may be working on in class, and of course, that will be allowable. Um, in terms of continuing high school student education, we will have multiple lessons through freshman transition program that the upperclassmen will lead, as well is as in Health nine. And then there will be new additional lessons developed for the new Health eleven classes, to prepare them for healthy cellphone and social media habits as they prepare for college. We plan to partner with students in our high school clubs to explore tech-free opportunities that can happen throughout the high school day. In middle school, we are proposing two significant changes for the fall. We are going to pilot phone racks that will require students to park their phones upon their entry into the building in the morning. We will allow any seventh and eighth graders who are going uptown for lunch to take their phones with them and then require they park their phones back when they re-enter the building after lunch. We're also exploring adding additional playtime by offering an open gym from seven fifteen to seven forty-five in the mornings, prior to the extra help period. In addition, all three grades will have access to an open gym every day during the lunch period, in addition to having access to the front property daily during lunch. Mr. McCora, middle school principal, will also reinforce with the advisors that going outside for advisory lessons is encouraged. In elementary school, we're also making a significant change, as it pertains to the cellphones. No devices that connect to the internet will be allowed in the elementary school. And that will be starting right in the fall. If elementary school students bring other devices that only have text and phone capability, such as flip phones or gizmos, and they do not connect to the internet, they will be required to keep them in their locker during the school day. In terms of other changes, we are proposing in the elementary school, which was piloted this year, indoor recess, which occurs when there's inclement weather, now happens with no tech and no movies. So instead, students play games together. Like in the middle school, the elementary school will encourage teachers to find time to take their students outside, in addition to recess, to reinforce fresh air and social interaction. We feel good about these proposed changes, and each principal will be communicating this clearly to the parents and the students prior to the start of school. And speaking of parents, I ask all of you, in partnership with us, to please make every effort not to text your children during the school day. We will also continue to educate both our students and parents as it relates to healthy habits pertaining to digital citizenship and access to social media. And we look forward to taking advantage of our older students, speaking with our younger students about their lived experiences, because we believe that would be very powerful for our younger students to hear. So I thank you for your patience. As we have gone through this process, it was important to me that I did take the time to hear from the various constituents on this. And um, we are eager to make these changes and to see how it plays out. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly.
My pleasure. Matthew, you're up.
Uh, thank you. Uh, hello, everyone. So since I last spoke, which was around two, three months ago, there's obviously been a lot of action in the high school, especially with the year winding down and exams and so on. Uh, so starting with the arts, uh, in April and May, we saw all three of the band, orchestra, and chorus perform their annual spring concerts, uh, just behind us in the auditorium, which uh, obviously, that's good. Um, following that in May, the high school went into the dreaded full AP exam mode, which uh, obviously isn't nearly as fun as the spring music concerts. Um, in a fitting end to the AP period, though, we had our junior and senior prom at Lynnhurst Mansion in Tarrytown, which uh, was a pretty incredible venue. I don't know if you guys have seen it, but it was on the Hudson River. It was ridiculous, but um, a very fitting celebration to end the AP period, which safe to say was very stressful for all involved. Uh, back to the theme of arts, uh, if you guys look behind you or down in the atrium, student art is being exhibited across the school, uh, in celebration of the Arts Council's Annual Arts Festival. Um, and this is a part of the annual art show, which, as I said, student artwork has been showcased across the school. Uh, spring sports seasons all came to an end, uh, with many teams making deep runs into their respective playoffs. Uh, unfortunately, I was eliminated in the first round, so I wasn't as fortunate. But many teams made deep runs, uh, and this all culminated in the Spring Sports Awards, in which uh, s- players and coaches were celebrated for their successful seasons. We lost most of the senior class, so the juniors are now the top dogs in the high school. And they're conducting senior shadowing and preparing for their upcoming graduation on Saturday, I believe. And then just yesterday, high school awards were held across all grade levels and uh, there was an, uh, all school awards in the auditorium as well. And students were given awards for their achievements and hard work throughout the school year. And then finally, classes ended Tuesday and finals began today. I had one at eight AM, bright and early, so um, just about a week left until a nice and frankly, well-deserved summer break. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curran.
Thank you. And this evening, we are so pleased, um, Mr. McCora, maybe you wanna do a little introduction. But as we have done all year at our public board meetings, um, it was important to us to share with the community what the Bronxville Promise means to us um, within the school. And so we've done what we call the Bronxville Promise in Action throughout the school year. And I thought it fitting this evening if we had some reflections. And so uh, two eighth graders were kind enough to join us this evening uh, to share their reflections on what the Bronxville Promise has meant to them.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly, and it's my pleasure to introduce two wonderful students that will share some reflections on what it's been like, as they have reflected on the Bronxville Promise. The first student I'd like to bring up is William Kennedy. He's an eighth grader. He's going, going to speak a little bit about leadership and what that has meant to him over the years. Come on, Will. They are very reluctant. But I just wanna say how proud I am of both of them.
Thank you.
Um, so for my Bronxville Promise, uh, I had to choose between four things. Uh, I cho- uh, out of them, I chose leadership. So um, I'm sure everybody in this room has been sort of pushed into a role of leadership at some point in their life, and they were kind of sad about it. So that's definitely happened to me a few times, but um, what I learned from all of that is that it's helped me become a much better leader and a much better overall person in general. So, yeah, um, my name is William Kennedy. I love going to sports games. Um, I have a cat, and her name is Daisy. That's me and my cat. Um, so this is some of my um, experience leading on a sport team, on a recreational sport team. Um, baseball team. Um, so I um, I wasn't the best player on this team. There were a few players that were better than, a lot, quite a few players that were better than me. Um, it, but one thing that I thought I brought to the table for this team was my leadership and how I was able to connect the younger kids to the older kids. So I, on this team, I was, I was twelve. Um, it was, it was twelve U baseball. Um, some of the kids on the team were eleven. So those kids didn't really talk to the older kids a lot. And so I kind of felt like I wanted to connect the older kids and the younger kids because I really thought that if we weren't a team and we can all work together and we can all talk, then we wouldn't, we wouldn't be suc- successful. So I, we, you know, I tried to talk to the, to the, the younger kids and I learned that they were just like me. Like even though they were a year younger than me, like we had similar personalities and we had like a semi- similar humor. So then the whole team sort of came wa- uh, came into one. Um, we all, we were all able to like talk on the field, we were able to have fun. And although we weren't the best team in the league on paper, we won the championship because no other team was able to make that connection. So I think that's just one thing that leadership can, can help you do, so. Um, another experience I have with leadership is leading in English class. So at the beginning of the year, well, during summer, we had to read a book called Lord of the Flies. Um, and in that book, they're on an island. Uh, so we had to make a similar island, uh, in English class. And there was one female leader and a male leader. And I was chosen by my classmates to be that male leader. And we had to make laws for that island. And I made some laws that people didn't exactly love. So um, people were like, no way, you're not passing that law. And I had the power to pass that law. But I decided that if I wanted to make this a good, happy island, where unlike in the book, we don't kill each other, um, we would, I would actually listen to them and make, make the laws what we all want. And so what, after that, we made, in my opinion, the best island out of the four, the four islands that each class made. And I think that's just a really great example of how leadership can like, can really just like help you come to an end result that, that, you know, that it's easier to reach than if you just work by, by yourself. So um, how am I going to lead in the future? So every time I step out of my comfort zone into a role of leadership, I'm gonna think of it as like slowly popping a bubble. I know you can't pop a bubble slowly, because if you pop a bubble, it would just pop. But I'm gonna think of it like popping one slowly. And every time I step out of my comfort zone and, you know, lead, um, I'm eventually gonna become a better and better and better leader until the point where I completely burst that bubble and I'm able to lead wherever I want and whenever I want and hopefully just becoming, uh, just become a great leader, uh, in the future. And yeah, that's it.
Great.
And we're, and we're really excited about Will going on to the high school and taking on leadership roles. My, the next student I'd like to present to you is someone who only came to us last year, right out of Singapore, uh, where she was studying abroad and has made a big impact on our school. So would you join me in please welcoming Simona Danzer, who's gonna speak to you about her experience a little bit?
So when I first found out I was selected to perform this presentation, I went home, opened up my computer, churned out fifteen pages worth of ideas, reread it, decided it was all terrible, deleted, and rewrote. Again, and again, and again. Has this happened to anyone here before? Okay, good, I'm not alone. So I'm an over thinker by nature. The phrase, "You're your own worst critic," that applies one hundred percent to me. When I'm doing things, I just feel like there's this little voice in the back of my mind telling me that people are gonna judge me and laugh at me and that what I'm doing is not good enough. And it's just something that's been there my whole life. And up until recently, I just didn't really know how to deal with it. But let's get back to what the point of this presentation is. So I went up to present my presentation to my classmates. And I got up there and I ran through the first part I had written smoothly, but stiffly. And then I got to that second part, that blank space on the paper, and I froze. I was a deer in the headlights. My classmates eyes the oncoming car. I was humiliated. I could practically hear their laughter, their judgment, their mockery. I was sure it was the worst experience of my life. But first, let's get the formalities out of the way. My name is Simona Danzer and I hate assumptions. People always seem to be making them about me, from things like my ethnicity, my religion, to even things like foods I like. But I'm gonna set the record straight for you guys. So I'm half Indian and half American. I'm also half Christian and half Jewish, but I choose not to follow either religion. I'm an atheist. And I like most foods, except tomatoes. I can't stand tomatoes. But you know, but there's a funny thing about assumptions. No matter how much we despise them, we always seem to keep making them, about others and about ourselves. But let's get back to the story. So I was up there, frozen, mortified, completely sure everyone was judging me, when I had a recollection. I remember when I was put in a similar situation, and instead of failure and embarrassment, I had actually thrived. In social studies this year, we were learning about the annexation of Hawaii. In order for us to understand this broad topic better, my social studies teacher, Mr. Idell, organized a debate with people arguing from different viewpoints, like the viewpoint of the president, Congress, various newspapers and magazines, and the Hawaiian people, which was me. So I was terrified. I had actually not considered the, that viewpoint until right when I got selected for that part, which was fifteen minutes before I was meant to go up. I was sure I was gonna humiliate myself and my team, and basically, it was just gonna be awful. And you know what? It was, at first. I came up and I did have some good ideas, but I was too afraid to share them to the class. So my team was just sort of sitting there doing nothing. And then there came this one point, where I had actually a really great rebuttal to the opponent's argument, and I was really excited to share it. But that little voice, that voice that had been following me my whole life, came back in, telling me, why would you share that? Do you want people to laugh at you? You're just gonna make yourself look like a fool. It's better to stay silent and say nothing. And I just realized, you know what? Who cares? That little voice, it's always gonna be there. But why do I put so much stock and effort into what other people view my opinions and put so much worth on what others view me, rather than my own self-worth? If I'm going to be a leader, like the Bronxville Promise tells me to, I have to learn to respect my own opinions and views. And while I should worry about how I come off to other people, I shouldn't make it my main purpose and I shouldn't make it, have it control my life. Because at the end of the day, I'm the one who has to live with myself. And how am I meant to do that if I can't even respect my own views? Thank you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity for these students. We're very proud of them. They're a great example of our student body, and we're looking really incredibly forward to all the work they're going to do as they move forward to the high school. If I may ask the board's permission and the superintendent's permission, they have a foreign language exam to study for tomorrow. So if it, if it would be okay, I'd like them to get a big round of applause and maybe X M if they can.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
And Matt Curran, you have a final tomorrow too, right?
Uh, yes, I do.
I got a text from a former court member.
I'd like to, um, as I think about next year, I think I'd like to continue that commitment of um, presenting the Bronxville Promise in Action. Um, 'cause I don't know about you, but I can never get enough of it. And I think it's just a, a beautiful representation of um, how seriously we take the Bronxville Promise. So providing we're all good with that, maybe we can continue that tradition next year.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah.
One hundred percent.
Yeah, great. Um, personnel. Um, as I alluded to earlier, the first uh, two resolutions have to do with uh, Ms. Ann Meyer. And I would like uh, the board to consider those resolutions together, um, for the obvious reason, because the first is uh, Ann's resignation from high school principal. And then strongly tied to that, um, because of her commitment to continue to serve the Bronxville School, um, I ask you uh, to consider her probationary appointment as our next Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction effective July first. All right, board members, we have a motion to approve or to accept the resignation and approve the um, hiring of Ms. Myers as Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Dan.
And congratulations to us. Thank you, Ann. Yes.
Um, thank you. Um, also before you this evening are a number of resolutions, um, that relate to different aspects of personnel. We have some parent leaves, some retirements, um, resignations. Um, this is also uh, the agenda where I ask you to approve up to three days of summer work for any of our new faculty, so that they have ample opportunity to meet with their colleagues um, prior to school convening in the fall. Um, it's also the typical agenda where I ask you to consider um, both district office salaries as well as our administrators. Uh, our administrators have a contract, so they have a, a salary wage increase that was negotiated. Um, and in addition to that, um, I've recommended to you merit pay. Um, so that is for your consideration this evening. As well as any of our um, um, employees that are not in uh, units. So we have confidential clerical in the business office and with personnel, um, and district clerk, um, as well as the few custodial supervisors we have. And of course, uh, Mike Lee, um, our Director of Facilities. So all of those, I know we've had ample opportunity to discuss that in executive session over the past couple of months, so I appreciate your, your input with that. Um, this is also the agenda where um, all part-time faculty are put before you. Um, they are annual appointments, um, because of their part-time status, so we wanna make sure that they are approved and ready to go for the fall. Um, we are so grateful to Susan Monaco, who is not yet even retired, and we are hiring her back uh, to cover a leave replacement in the middle school, so we are very grateful to her. Uh, we do have a few uh, teacher aide resignations, as well as a new teacher aide. And I think that covers all of our resolutions, C through W, please. Happy to take any questions.
Any further questions? Motion to approve, please, item C through W.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My turn. Uh, the board has received a financial summary for April and May. Uh, the projection for year-end surplus is pretty consistent with prior months and remains strong. We continue to see expenditures forecasted near break-even. Uh, but as we've been seeing all year, uh, we're seeing um, the revenues uh, come in very strong. Uh, due mostly to non-resident tuition, uh, interest and uh, some other income. But this, this story is really driven by interest income. Uh, rates have remained high, and uh, you know, we're kind of enjoying that for the current year. Uh, and we're forecasting about a million dollars, uh, just in revenue surplus alone and with the- and with a small surplus in the expenditures. Um, you know, that, that combined surplus sets us up for, uh, nicely for the half a million dollar appropriation from unassigned fund balance. That was, uh, approved to offset the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five tax levy uh, in the budget that went before the voters in May. And, uh, I, it should keep us in a strong position regarding our reserves. And when we, over the next month and through the summer audit, when we, when we close all purchase orders, um, I would expect that surplus to drift a little higher. So we're in decent shape. Uh, as is customary in this meeting, uh, the, and the reorganization meeting in a couple of weeks, and then the first September meeting, there's a number of financial action items as we prepare for the next fiscal year. They, they kinda go in groups. Uh, financial action items A and B, uh, we discussed at the Finance Committee meeting the other night. A authorizes us to transfer any unallocated surplus to the Capital Projects Reserve and to reduce the reserve for tax surcharge settlements, uh, to the board target of below two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, financial action item B authorizes me to bind our commercial umbrella crime and cyber insurance policies for the coming year. Uh, we have a final number that just came in this afternoon for the cyber policy. I had estimated about thirty thousand dollars. It came in at about twenty-five thousand.
Alright.
So we're, you know, it's a little bit of good news. We also, you know, and this is my favorite part of every meeting, I get to announce yet another foundation grant. You know, the foundation, you know, they step up for everybody. And right now they're stepping up for, uh, a garden project along Midland Avenue. Um, split even we between their, uh, general donation fund and the special education designated fund. And, uh, I believe it will be mostly maintained by our, uh, special ed program students. So I'm really looking forward to that. And, you know, with gratitude, the foundation, um, has, is, has been just a beacon of support for us.
I wanna say just one more, um, thing on that. I think what makes this especially, um, heartwarming is that it's really, um, a partnership between, um, the special ed, the high school special ed program led by Christine Dowd, the related service, um, personnel, OTPT, and, um, our students who are involved in our sustainability, um, initiatives. So it was really a nice, um, partnership between many of our students, um, within the building. And it was also an example of how both the, um, the foundation board as well as the Designated Fund for Special Education through the foundation, uh, also chaired by Christine Dowd, um, together shared, um, this expense. So it was just, I wanted to point out because it's a, it's another example of how we can pull together having K through twelve all in one building.
It's nice.
So if possible, can we take A, B, and C together before I move on to contracted services?
Uh, sure. So that's the fund balance transfers, the insurance renewals, and the foundation grants.
Correct.
Any further questions? Uh, could we have a motion to approve items A, B, and C?
Some moved. Second?
All in favor? With great gratitude to the foundation. Thank you.
Items D through H are contract services, uh, which we tend to renew on an annual basis. Some have been competitively bid and some are considered a professional service, which are not subject to competitive bidding requirements. Uh, D is renewal arc of our contract with the Management Advisory Group, which helps us maximize our state aid and compliance with filing required information, uh, with the State Education Department specifically in the area of special education. E, A and A maintenance are, uh, our people you see, especially this time of night running through the building, making sure we're ready to open tomorrow. Uh, we have a base contract of approximately nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was competitively bid two years ago. And we're, we're looking to roll that over for another year. F is CRP sanitation, who was the sole bidder last year for our, uh, trash. Uh, you know, weekly trash removal and, uh, special dumpsters whenever needed. Uh, we're, we're very satisfied with their service. G, Altaris Consulting, which is safety, compliance, and, uh, consulting, and as well as providing our Director of Security, uh, Vic Penny, Vic Prenny, the, uh, retired police sergeant from the Yonkers PD, who is on-site every day managing the security of the building. And then Arrow Security, which provides us the guards that we use at all the entrances and, uh, the grounds. So I'm looking to renew those contracts for another year.
So for item E and, uh, H, was there any increase in those contract amounts over last year?
No, because the, um, uh, the prevailing wage for A and A maintenance did not go up this year. It went up to, I think, November of last year. Uh, and the H, uh, that's the same thing. I think the prevailing wage is consistent. But, uh, I think we may have added a, added a guard during the year, but the, the amount we pay per guard is staying the same.
Okay. Why did we add a guard?
Probably outdoors, uh, to help with the field enforcement. And then item I, we're setting our non-resident tuition rate. Uh, we're not including the faculty rate as of yet, as it is a subject in our ongoing negotiations with the, uh, Bronxville Teachers Association. Uh, the non-resident rate, uh, is, was a formula developed by S C D, and we're increasing it to match our tax levy increase. And that's it.
Any questions on items?
D through I.
D through I. There's none. We have a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you. Uh, then we're gonna move right into facilities. Uh, I have a facilities update. Uh, the security vestibule and the flood pump enclosure, uh, were both approved, as we all know, uh, in May. Thank you to the voters of Bronxville. Um, our architectural consultant, L A N, uh, expects to submit both projects to, uh, the State Education Department. Um, actually, they probably, I think they're both in. Uh, so, um, the clock is ticking on that. The backlog is currently six months. And, uh, after they begin a review around December, we'd expect to obtain a permit by February first, two thousand twenty-five, because these are not complex projects. Uh, we think the review should go fairly quick when they get to it. And then, uh, I think our calendar suggests we could begin bidding the projects somewhere around February, uh, to April for construction next summer. And, uh, if anybody's been by the front of the school during the daylight, you see a lot of landscaping work being done. Through the leadership of our chairman. We've developed a, uh, seven hundred thousand dollar plan that we were slowly making our way through with the help of some outside partners. Uh, the P T A has been very generous. Connie, I think we got some slides or renderings. Uh, you can show people about what the plan looks like if you just slowly make your way through those. The P T A's been very generous with nearly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in funding so far. Village Hall is chipping in, um, with tree work along Pond Field Road and, uh, new lamps eventually. We've completed the, uh, hedge row and the front lawn irrigation, uh, which we provided. And, uh, some new trees and shrubs to accent the main entrance, uh, which will make for a very snazzy graduation pictures. And, uh, some tree planting and replacement along Pond Field Road. You know, we're, we're still looking for some partners to help us. Um, with an, you know, it's an area that everyone sees every day, and it serves as a, really is a park in the heart of the village. So we have a, a lot of activity, but, uh, you know, we're taking it one step at a time.
Do you wanna add anything, um, Eddie, just on background of the committee that's, um, taken this on? The makeup of the committee?
Um, so if you remember what the front looked like not too long ago, there was a lot of dirt, a lot of dirt paths, not a lot of grass. The hedges stopped on one side, which historically was not accurate with the school. Um, so we kind of got to thinking, what could we do to make the front look a little bit more representable of what's going on inside the school?
And this was we, the facilities committee?
Sort of came out of the facilities committee, but I think the administration had been looking at it for years at, as they look out their office windows. Um, and, and so there was a mutual want to get something done, um, and the village was eager to partner. Um, they have committed sixty-eight thousand dollars towards, um, a bunch of new plantings along, along Pond Field. Um, the P T A has been phenomenal in helping with this project. As Dan mentioned, I think they're all in so far for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, and, um, Amy Kraus and Deirdre Doni, um, former P T A president, current P T A president, have been, um, extremely helpful and, um, they've been with us the whole way, so we're extremely grateful for them and for all the parents who contribute to the P T A. Thank you. Um, it, so it kinda started with, uh, just the want to do something. Um, we got together with, uh, the village. Um, the Bronxville, um, Beautification Committee came out, the Historical Conservancy, um, Jim Palmer, Mayor Marvin, the village trustees. Um, and we decided that we would have to, you know, figure out who was most qualified to do the work. It's, it's more like landscape construction. Um, it's not, you know, your typical backyard project. So we, um, we requested, um, bids from three different contractors. Um, all three are very qualified. We ended up getting, um, two proposals. Um, one was sort of halfway there and one was really what we thought was necessary for this type of project. Um, that particular contractor currently services institutions like Columbia University and Fordham University and Bryant Park, um, parts of Central Park, so, and, and he's local. You know, so we really felt confident that we had the right partner who could do the whole project, um, and for a very fair price when we, when we looked around and saw what, what else was, you know, what other projects were costing. So we're only a little bit of a ways in, but I think we've got a lot to show for it so far. Um, as Dan mentioned, we've got a lot to go. Um, we're looking at doing, um, a replacement of the sidewalk here on Pond Field between Meadow and Midland, which is currently only about four feet wide. So if you picture, you know, two people pushing strollers past each other, someone's gotta yield to the other person and either pull onto the grass or pull onto the street. Same thing goes with, you know, folks walking by with shopping bags or during pickup and drop-off, it's pretty crowded. Um, so the next big segment that we're hoping to do is the sidewalk, which will expand it to about eight feet wide, uh, which will make it a lot safer. There's a lot of cracks. The roots of the trees are pushing, um, pushing the sidewalk up in certain places. Um, so that's really the next big thing. And then when, once that gets done, the village is committed to redoing the light posts out front, which will look really pretty. They'll be consistent with the light posts in town, um, a bunch of new trees. Um, and then we can kind of focus on some of the pretty stuff along the facade. So we are, uh, very grateful for all of our partners, and like I said, especially the P T A and the village, uh, for their commitment so far. Any questions from anybody?
The district has invested about fifty thousand so far.
The district has put in fifty, uh, for the sprinklers and irrigation.
Yeah.
Which is why the grass is so green.
And also, Eddie, you mentioned, uh, the historical, uh, consistency, uh, with the plantings and, and the architecture.
Yeah, yeah. So like I said, the headline used to go all the way around the school, um, all the way around the front. And then I think when they probably did the construction over here, they ripped it up and it was never replaced. So it was important to get that perimeter back. Um, and.
But even with the trees, you mentioned that they, we, the.
The, the.
The native trees.
The native, I'm sorry. Yes, we are, we are, we are focusing heavily on bringing as much native species as we can, native to this area, um, as much as we possibly can.
And getting some more color.
Get some more color, yeah.
Well, it's very beautiful. Yeah, no, it's a kind of a true public-private partnership. And, you know, we're proceeding cautiously as we're able to identify funding and, um, we're able to use some maintenance funding from the district, but we'll, we'll take it one step at a time. And what would be the, the next big phase?
Sidewalk.
The sidewalk, okay.
All the remaining parts kind of hinge on the sidewalk getting done.
And the, and what, do we, sorry, if you mentioned this already, I missed it. What's the estimate for the sidewalk?
The estimate for the sidewalk and to lay new sod on either side of the sidewalk, right now is like a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Okay.
So we're, we're gonna compare that to make sure that per square foot, that's exactly where it's supposed to be. Um, and we'll proceed cautiously from there.
Okay.
And then finally, uh, facilities, uh, you know, the administration, the board is looking very closely at our private school transportation budget, which has been up significantly over the last couple of years. Uh, we have a little bit of good news thus far in that our applications are down, uh, almost twenty from the prior year. That should help a little bit, but we're also looking at possibly, um, acquiring another vehicle and, uh, and hiring our own driver to, to, uh, possibly generate a roof of our own. Uh, you should be hearing more about that in August probably.
Thank you, Dan.
And that's it. Can we move right into other action items?
Uh, oh, for faci.
Facilities, they're all.
For a facility?
No, there's no facility.
Policy update, yeah.
Policy P.
So we, uh, okay. So, so we, we.
That was, that was just said out loud in the morning.
I don't mind being policy P.
I love that.
It's kinda like produce P. The, so the finance, the finance committee met this week and the policy committee met this week. The finance committee, we, we went through three new, uh, updated three new pol, three policies that are required by the state that have been updated in enough for, Connie, you're saying? I thought it was three policies, one regulation.
Oh, it's three policies, four policies and one reg, uh, two regulations tied to the one annual budget.
Yep. So they haven't been, uh, updated in a while and, you know, these are, and the recommended language is state recommend, recommend, recommended. So, uh, we agreed to it and it was good. Um, the investment policy was updated also. We looked at that. Um, then I just wanted to see where our investment money was and just, you know, have people know where, where it is. Our, our investment money is with, uh, New York Class, which is for New York State, it's a local government investment pool. It's got about thirteen billion dollars in it. Uh, it's advised, the funds are advised by Public Trust Advisors, which, uh, advises twelve different local government investment pools in different states around the country, about eighty billion under management. The current yield on the fund is five point two one. Dan, Dan's alluded to that. We're getting a very good yield on it. And the, these are effectively like government money market funds for municipalities. And you, you know, the makeup of this New York Class is, you know, forty-six percent municipalities, twenty-eight percent school districts, fifteen percent fire districts, some county money and other municipal money. If you wanna look into it, uh, their website's newyorkclass.org. Um, Public Trust Advisors is publictrustadvisors.com if you wanna look into any of it. Um, but really safe, simple, uh, funds that have daily liquidity. You can take your money out at any point. And, and they're very short. You know, the, the average duration on this, similar to most money market funds, is like forty-three days. That's, um, and on the finance side, uh, you know, Dan went through the insurance renewal. And basically, we, you know, there's, we're in a co-op. And basically, we, you know, there's, we're in a co-op under New York Sur Insurance. And there's no, there's no real competitor in the market. I think Dan said Utica Insurance, they shopped it out with Utica Insurance. They're back in the marketplace looking to do lower Westchester School Districts and it was more money.
Yeah, and after they, after they pulled out twenty years ago, so, you know.
So similar to other things in our budget, you know, like there's no competition. So kind of is what it is.
And their coverage has been great.
Yeah.
You know, we, their claims, although we don't have a lot of claims, when we do, they're very responsive.
Does anybody have any questions for Pete?
For policy Pete?
Nope. Nothing for policy Pete.
Only for another month, unless I renew.
Perhaps. We'll see, we'll see.
Dr. Kelly does most of the heavy lifting and now Dan's involved too.
Well, thank you for...
Professional development, Pete, after that.
Yeah.
Thank you to the finance committee for reviewing all of those policy updates in detail. So we'll take these. First reading, right?
Yes, we need a resolution to accept the four policies for a first reading.
Resolution to accept the four policies for a first reading?
Motion? Motion?
Motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Thanks very much, Pete. Textbook disposal.
When we get new textbooks, we have to get rid of some old ones. It's required by law that the board, when we dispose of textbooks, that we have a resolution to do so. We usually try to donate them or sell them if there's any residual value, usually very little, as many of these are being discarded because they're either damaged. But many of them are being discarded because they're no longer used in the curriculum. So we'll try and, you know, a lot of them are paperbacks also, so that are classroom copies. So we'll try and donate those where we can. And then we're primary, which one are... Primary mathematics, we're discarding a textbook and which is kind of related to the next resolution when we're accepting textbooks.
Right, okay. If there's no questions, we'll have a resolution to approve the decommission and disposal of the textbooks listed on the agenda. We have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. You're up there, textbook lady.
So, we're doing your... Yeah, sure. So it's my pleasure tonight, related to textbooks that we are discarding, to welcome Ashley Chippa, our K to eight mathematics coach, up to the podium, who's going to describe for you the process in which we engaged throughout this year to adopt a new math curriculum for kindergarten through eighth grade students that is aligned to updated next-generation New York State standards.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for inviting me tonight to speak on behalf of the progress that was made this year with our math program search, kindergarten through eighth grade. This process involved many key players and throughout you will find it was extensive and thorough. As I expressed last week to the strategies and curriculum meeting participants, I wanted to express my gratitude for this school year. It's been a pleasure becoming a Bronco, so thank you for that. Our main goal this school year was to find a cohesive and fully-aligned math program that supported our students in kindergarten through eighth grade. With the new adoption of the New York State Next Generation Math Standards, alignment and cohesion were our primary focus throughout the school year. So with any program search, the first order of business was for us to research surrounding districts and where they were finding success. We began by looking at Westchester and Rockland County to see what they were using. And as you can see, many are using Eureka Math Squared. But being that we're very close to Scarsdale and we have similar demographics and academic rigor, reveal was sparking our interest as well. And we looked into Imagine Learning due to the fact that some of our teachers had prior experience with the program and really liked it. So we used this comprehensive list as a starting point for screening our companies. Okay. After doing, after this process and all the surveying, I went to a site visit in Scarsdale. And the visit helped me learn about the resource, but it also, more importantly, helped me with the extensive pilot and implementation process that they use. The collaboration with them helped me get some insight on what our next steps were here in Bronxville and how the rest of the year might look. So after this informational meeting, Connor Mitchell and I worked together and started screening several companies. Connor Mitchell is the middle school curriculum leader for math and he was a thought partner throughout and very beneficial. So during the sessions, it was really important for us to note that the state assessments are now in digital format from grades three and up. So with that in mind, we wanted to make sure we had a program that provided opportunities for students not only to show their understanding on paper, but also in the digital format to prepare them for this. And this is a New York State guideline now across the state, so. All right. So curriculum leaders from each grade level, as well as our administrators, came together to review six programs based on our initial screening. Three of them, as you can see, were programs we were already using from kindergarten all the way to eighth and three were new programs, Eureka, Imagine, and Reveal. The team used a common rubric that addressed various criteria such as rigor, digital resources, and ease of access. We worked in teams and we eliminated four of these programs. Eureka Math Squared and Imagine Learning scored the highest on the rubrics. Reveal was eliminated by the teachers because it was seen as too laborious and confusing for the students, based on teacher feedback. After this, we, right after the New York State testing was complete, beginning of May, we took both of the programs and piloted them simultaneously at the same time in each grade level. So here I have an example of fourth grade. The teachers on each grade used their pacing calendars to determine what unit of study they were up to in May. Fourth grade was working on decimals. We split the team in half. Half of them piloted using Eureka Math Squared, half of them piloted using Imagine Learning. And we made sure that the lessons and the length matched up. The teachers worked diligently to plan their units and we worked together, you know, with, under my support and guidance, to do so. The feedback that the teachers had was documented throughout the month and we ended the month with vertical team meetings to capture the pros and cons of both programs. And we encouraged open discussion, not only as a team and what was beneficial with this process, but across the grade level so that we could really make sure we were planning vertically. You'll find the pros and cons for Eureka Math Squared based on Bronxville teacher feedback here. Overwhelmingly, teachers who piloted Eureka were pleased with many components of the program. And there were significantly much more pros than cons overall. We went through the same process with Imagine Learning and while it had some great features, it just didn't have the rigor and complexity that we see here in Bronxville. It didn't seem to be a match. So overall, Eureka Math Squared checked the boxes for what we were looking for. While the teachers really enjoyed the centers and partner work that Imagine Learning provided, we believe that we'll be able to find some of that in Eureka and make sure that it's implemented throughout and added in places that it might be necessary. But really, the important part of this was providing our teachers, because they're the experts, with training and the ability to pilot these programs because it helped create buy-in and understanding with such an important instructional shift in program. So another tool we used to guide us during this process was Ed Reports. Ed Reports is an independent nonprofit organization and they use trained, high-quality educators that extensively review instructional materials for leaders as they're making, you know, important decisions on what to purchase. The main areas Ed Reports evaluates include focus, coherence, rigor, balance, content connections, teacher support, assessment, student support, and intentional design. And Eureka Math Squared met expectations in all of these areas, which was a plus. Each publishing company creates a publisher background response to Ed Reports. I offer you the following quote from their publisher response. "The statement directly aligns with our goal here in Bronxville, to maintain open enrollment for our eighth graders in algebra." This, Algebra I, the advantage helps us in that it provides students with the opportunity to either enroll in AP Calculus AB or BC in the high school. And it's proven to be a very successful endeavor for Bronxville students, so we would like to continue that. Our next steps, so this summer we'll be working with the teachers to support them through implementation and planning and looking through the new materials. Throughout the implementation, we will ensure that we're taking data so that we can make sure we are analyzing for opportunities for intervention and enrichment, both within the program and beyond. We'll continue to support the middle school to make sure that the curriculum includes all the standards for six through eight combined into two years with a focus on algebraic operations. And that will support our open enrollment policy, as I said earlier. So in conclusion, I hope that the presentation outlined a thorough process, one that included curriculum leaders and teachers in an effort to find the best fit for our staff and our students. I am truly looking forward to working with Ann Meyer and supporting the staff collaboratively through our implementation and our best practices. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to add, it's hard to believe that Ashley has been here only one year. She was absolutely instrumental in this process, which was thorough and thoughtful, calling vendors, getting materials in for piloting, making videos, short videos, showing teachers how to access digital components. Anything she could do to get these materials into the teachers' hands and allow them to try it out with students was phenomenal and I thank her for that. And I know she will make an incredible partner with Assistant Superintendent Meyer next year as they move forward with the implementation, so it's very exciting. Thank you, Ashley. So that being said, you will be looking at some new textbooks tonight, including Eureka Math Squared textbooks and consumable materials for students next year in grade K to eight. We also have a new textbook for an advanced placement course we're offering in American Government. This is something that aligns very well with the AP curriculum in this course. Since it's a new course, we currently do not have a textbook for it and so this one will be made available to the students and the teacher teaching that course. In addition, the other textbook, which is not so new, but this is an Algebra Trig textbook, which is written by Sullivan, which is a very popular author for high school math teachers. And they just felt that a text was necessary for this particular class. It was missing and can help to anchor what the students are learning. They do use other materials as well. However, they felt this course really needed an updated textbook to guide the students' learning in the curriculum. So you will be voting on all three of those this evening. Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Nope.
Dan, what is the math on the total cost of this purchase? Do you have that with you?
K to eight?
Yeah.
Seventy.
Seventy K, seventy thousand dollars.
Okay.
And what's the recurring cost year over year, Dan?
Thirty?
No.
Fifty? That's painful.
But we discussed in committee also that it wasn't that different from the current year-to-year cost.
No, I mean, whenever you're going elementary math, and I brought these just to give you a sense, right? These are what the textbooks look like. You've got a textbook and a consumable. And actually, with Eureka Math Squared, the textbook is also a quasi-consumable. So you'll be looking to buy those every year as well as digital access. The good news is that the students take them home at the end of the year and if they want a review over the summer or things of that nature, that they're there for them. And I guess as they continue to pilot, they might find certain parts of it less necessary than others and that's also helpful. But as Ashley said, the digital components are important because the students will be taking tests digitally. And even up through high school, it's going to move in that direction. So having those opportunities for them, I think, is important. And, you know, they'll adjust as they see, you know, what's necessary and not. But all in, that would be the cost to replenish the materials every year. But again, you're talking about K through eighth grade, so a significant portion of the population.
So I would typically ask Mara to continue, but I am not going to. And rather, I'm going to ask Ann to come up because this is the part of the agenda. It's actually required by the Commissioner of Education that annually the board approves the professional learning plan. And so we have a professional development committee that is chaired by Denise Flood. And there are representatives on that committee from elementary, middle, and high school, as well as from the leadership team. We have a Board of Education liaison. We have a community member. So really, a very well-run committee that really speaks to the professional development we offer throughout the school year. So I have asked Ann to summarize next year's plan for us. So before we move on to that agenda item, do you want us to approve the textbooks?
Well, that would be helpful.
Could we, if there's no further questions, leave a motion to approve?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks very much. Sorry about that.
Okay, great. So as Dr. Kelly said, the PDP is developed collaboratively with a number of constituents that represent the community. And I'll just add that the Foundation and the PTA are also part of that committee. And so for next year, the PDP plan that will get submitted to the state will involve a few priorities. So one of those priorities will involve professional development that will continue to ensure that we're focused on the science of reading. Another key priority will be implementation of the new math curriculum and professional development around that. We will also be working closely with our science and math departments to ensure that the curriculum is aligned with the new standards, including for science, the new NGSS standards. Next year will be the first year that New York State administers new science Regents exams in a very, very long time. And next year will be living environment and earth science, though they're newly designed. So we want to make sure that our courses are aligned and our students are prepared for those. And then finally, we're going to be doing quite a bit of work with faculty around AI, both as a tool in their teaching and also how to help students engage with AI productively. So in addition to the funds that we get that support the PDP, there are also ESAF funds, including Title II and Title IV funds that are used towards professional development, as well as the Teacher Center grant that supports professional development. So that is a summary of the PDP for next year. I'll take any questions, if you have any. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we did have an opportunity to review the document. And so we, a motion to approve the P...
Yeah, to approve the professional learning plan and to...
And execute the statement of...
To submit it to New York State.
Yeah, good, thank you. Okay. So if there's no further questions, we need a motion to approve the professional learning plan and authorize the...
The president and superintendent.
To execute the statement of certification for the New York State Ed Department.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Michael, let me hear you.
Aye.
So we, I think we've heard on committee reports from policy, really, and finance. So anything further from strategy and curriculum?
I think we covered it pretty well.
Yeah, so you were deep into the textbook review?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Among the math and the, you know, the, I will say that Ashley's presentation to the committee, I mean, it was so impressive, and I know you'd, much of it you reviewed tonight, but I have two high school kids, and I'm, I'm envious of the younger children that are gonna go through this. It just seems so much more substantial, the, the, the education they got in math has been so good. It's just gonna get better. Really appreciate that in one year you put this together, it's very impressive.
Thank you. Um, I think that concludes our regular business. We have a, um, our next meeting on July ninth. It's a reorganization meeting and-
Or we need a resolution.
Oh, we need a resolution to set the date of that meeting.
Yes, because this doesn't follow the date set by policy, which would have been July first, Tuesday.
Right, right, okay, sorry. So, may we, um, have a motion to approve July ninth as the date of that meeting, please?
Motion, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, and one of the things we'll do with that meeting is vote on new officers, uh, for the board. And, uh, so, what we'd like to do tonight is have some nominations. Are there any nominations for, uh, president of the board?
I'd like to nominate Michael for president going forward. Susan, we thank you for taking on this role early on as a board member, and you've set the bar really high, and you've prepared us all well for these meetings every month, and we appreciate all of your hard work and your responsiveness to us, the community, um, and the administration, and, um, we look forward to you as a board member next year, and Michael, um, I will nominate you for continuing on.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
I will second the nomination.
Thank you.
Uh, and I am honored to nominate my friend and fellow board member, Christina Skinner, for vice president.
I will second that.
Okay, if that becomes official on July ninth, we have to do that again.
We have our nominations and then we'll vote. All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Susan.
Um, so, um, that brings us to the public comment, I think, portion of the meeting. And I don't believe we have anything in the electronic queue, we do not. Uh, is there anyone here who wishes to speak? And please just identify yourself and, um, and come forward. Yeah?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jim Agnello, one of the counselors in the school for the last twenty-six years. I think this is only the third time I've ever spoken at a board meeting. Um, but I had to come in person tonight for my last board meeting to thank my colleagues in the audience, Dr. Kelly, Mara, Dan, and the board members for their service. Um, and it was a very long time ago that I actually came through those doors in the front on crutches for my interview. Um, Jane Burke was the president. I've come full circle, I had her grandchildren in my advisory class last year. Um, and I've also had current parents in the community, uh, they're students now, and a current board member, um, as well. So, um, I wanna thank you all for your service and the opportunity to spend these great twenty-six years here, um, and a sincere and heartfelt thank you.
Thank you very much. So, one of the things we've always known about you, Mr. Agnello, is that you are a class act. And tonight is yet another example of that. So, we thank you for all of your dedication to all things Bronxville and the multiple generations that you have touched, so thank you. Are there, is there any further, um, public comment? If there's none, then I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.